We're now returning to our agenda with the eleven o'clock public hearing modification of water and sewer rates. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the testimony. Each speaker will give about three minutes to testify. After everyone who speaks has done so, the hearing will close. I guess what we're referring to there is the meeting's gonna stand for about a week, testimony for about a week. Mr. Downey, is that correct?
Yes, because of the COVID situation, the fact that government buildings are closed to public access at this point. What we intend to do is to leave the record open so that the public can comment on the presentation made here this morning. The record will stay open until the close of business on Monday, April nineteenth. So, anyone who wants to make any comments can send them in, in writing to the County Commissioners, one hundred West Washington Street, Suite eleven oh one, Hagerstown, Maryland, two one seven four zero. Or you can mail your comments to Rachel McCarty. Her email is R M C C A R T Y at washco hyphen M D dot net. And again, if they could be, we're taking comments. We're happy to hear comments. You can also call and leave a message for the clerk as well. But comments need to be received by close of business on next Monday.
So, on that date, we'll be bringing this back for discussion or commissioners input, correct? So, can I guess, right, staff, would you please introduce yourself in the matter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Graves, Chief Financial Officer.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Bureaucratic Management.
Welcome to the public hearing for modification of water sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-two. Water and sewer revenue requirements show that an increase in water and sewer revenue is necessary to facilitate the Department of Water Quality's long-range financial plans. The presented rate schedule is based on this requirement and is attached to the ARF.
The rate changes are as follows. Residential full-service customer will go to one thirty-two ninety-two. Commercial one, full-service, one thirty-seven ninety-eight. Commercial two, one forty seventy-six. Commercial three, one forty seventy-six. Volunteer services, one thirty-two ninety-two. Residential commercial collection service fee, sixty-two thirteen. And then the volume charges per thousand gallons for sewer will be residential, eight fourteen. Commercial one, eight sixty-nine. Commercial two, nine eighty-eight. Commercial three, six seventy-nine. Volunteer services, eight fourteen. And then the non-meter sewer accounts will be one eighty-one seventy-six. The wholesale rate will go to eight oh two per thousand gallons. And then the connection fees will go to seventy-three hundred dollars for sewer connection. Those are the proposed rates for the sewer. The water proposed rates are as follows. Residential full-service, hundred and seven fifteen. Commercial one, one oh eight forty-six. Commercial two, one thirty-three ninety-three. Volunteer services, one oh seven fifteen. And then the volume charges for a thousand gallons are as follows. Residential, twelve forty. Commercial one, twelve forty-seven. Commercial two, nine sixty-three. Volunteer services, twelve forty. And then the non-meter water accounts will be one eighty-one fifty-five. And the connection fee will be twenty-seven hundred dollars. Those are the proposed water and sewer rates as included on your ARF.
I, um, I'm not sure, maybe, Mark, if you have a different number than was attached, but I just noticed two differences in the numbers that you read and what's listed as the rates. So I have for sewer rates, non-metered is one eighty-one seventy-one. You had originally stated seventy-six, but it's actually one eighty-one seventy-one. And then the connection fee is seventy-two hundred, not seventy-three hundred, as stated. So I just make that correction for the record. And for information, using a twelve thousand gallon benchmark, each three and a half percent rate increase costs the average user about six dollars per quarter or two dollars per month is an increase. This increase is necessary to sustain the operations of these funds. The rate increase will be lower for those individuals or families who use less than six thousand gallons per quarter. And that is because the base charge is not increasing by three and a half percent. We have made some structural changes in the water quality funds to help save money. One of the major changes or reductions in costs is attributed to the ninety-six A bond issue being paid off. And we've also reduced staffing where possible to generate personnel savings. These measures have helped the funds, but unfortunately, we still have a shortfall that needs addressed. The Water Fund continues to face operational shortfall and requires a general fund subsidy for fiscal year twenty-two of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. This shortage includes the assumption of the three and a half percent rate increase that we're presenting today. If no rate increase is approved, the general fund subsidy will need to be increased by twenty-six thousand. Expenditures exceed revenues in the sewer fund by six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. There is no general fund appropriation for fiscal year twenty-two for the sewer fund, but rather cash reserves will be used to bridge this gap. This does include the assumption of the three and a half percent increase for sewer. Incremental increases over a period of time was the plan from the start to get the water and sewer funds to a self-supported status. And we must continue efforts towards that in meeting our long-range goals. Any questions by the commissioners? Okay, with that, like Mr. Downey said, comments will be accepted through the end of day next Monday. And anything from you, Mark?
I do have a question here. On your water rates, I thought I read there resident full ser- uh, I guess, oh, never mind, that's per thousand gallons. I thought it was a thousand gallons.
Okay.
I just saw the five point three percent increase there for.
For the, um, for the volume charge, yes. So overall, it's still a three and a half percent increase. The volume charge is a little bit higher based on the rate model results. But the base charge is lower, which does help those families.
What's been the average increase over the last couple of years?
Over the last couple of years, the average increase has been about three and a half percent. Now, last year, water rates did not increase. They were proposed to increase, but they did not. So.
Is that found within their own budget that increase?
They delayed hiring, I believe, several personnel until December to try to absorb.
You referenced, uh, you've cut staffing.
We have reduced staffing.
So what's the number of employees that were there last year and how many are we gonna have this year? Is this one of the departments that's putting in for a new employee?
Yeah.
Water Quality is not asking for any new employees. I believe there are seven or eight positions on hold. These positions are on hold until the fund can support itself and until it's self-sustaining. And so they are committed to not hiring until that time, even if it means two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four.
If I recall correctly, I believe last year, the reason we didn't have a water rate increase, the proposed rate increase would have, would it be to fill it, like, it was like a ten thousand dollar gap? And we asked staff to find savings within the department for ten thousand dollars rather than pass on that rate increase just for ten thousand dollars.
Correct, and we delayed hiring some of the positions for six months in order to offset that differential.
Hey, Mark, I commend you for not hiring, for putting a hiring on freeze to help this out. Uh, is that, how much overtime is that generating? Is it generating more? Uh, you don't have to tell me a figure, but is it weighing out? Is, are we really killing ourselves with overtime?
I think the water side, I think overtime was twenty-six thousand dollars last year total. I can't remember what the number is this year. It's a twen- that's not too bad on the water side.
Not what I've heard in the past.
Um, the sewer side, generally, any overtime associated with sewers associate with breaks, which seem like they always happen at night and weekends and holidays.
That's overtime anyway.
So overtime is within reason, other than we have to deal with breaks, of course, when they happen.
Right.
If personnel was further reduced, though, I think it would impact the department as a whole. The seven positions that were put on hold, there was a lot of thought going into those. And, and, you know, we didn't want to disrupt the operation more than we had to. And so what we've tried to do is, you know, reduce or put on hold those positions that could be delayed without causing large amounts of overtime that may contribute to other issues, like people quitting or morale issues and stuff like that, to reasonably continue operations with that adjustment.
Mark, can you talk a little bit about the connection fee, what that goes towards? And only because last week I heard a comment about that connection fee. And can you explain what that's used for, what that represents?
Uh, the connection fees generally, in the model, go toward the upgrades associated with the treatment plants. Because, like, we just upgraded Sonic Ajake plant, and that was a thirty million dollar upgrade. So generally, the connection fees are used to offset the construction costs associated with the set upgrades. The rates generally cover the operational expenses.
In prior years, um, you know, there have been a couple of years where rates were suggested for increase, but not the connection fees and the, and there were comments about, you know, why are the connection fees not also increasing? And the rate model does show that they should increase along with the rates to our users.
So when was the last time we increased the connection fee?
Several years.
I can't recall.
I think four to six years. It's been a while. It's been a while.
Connection fees ever waived or anything like that?
We don't have the authority to waive connection fees. Uh, requests have been made on charitable contributions, and they came before you. And you have used your contingency fund and paid the sewer fund accordingly.
Anything that results with connection fees has to come from.
That is correct. That's how it's always been handled in the past. If there's a, if a nonprofit were to request it, it would be brought before you to make that decision if you want to. You haven't waived them. You have paid the water and sewer fund out of your contingency fund accordingly.
Yeah, it can't be just waived. There has to be a payment from somewhere, correct?
That, yeah, that's correct. Staff doesn't have the authority to do that. And staff doesn't have the money to pay, so it would have to come from somewhere. So that's, it would come for you to approve, and then you'd have to decide where the money was gonna come from. On a case-by-case basis, right?
Correct.
Commissioners, thoughts, comments? This concludes the commentary testimony until next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, next, our Historic Foundation Rural Legacy, Chris Boggs, if you're out there listening. Hey, we can get it. Jonathan, we're gonna back up, go to you for staff reports, please. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jonathan Horowitz, Department of Business Development. Sorry about the backup staff comments here. This is a request for a letter of support from the Commissioners in accept, to support the wastewater exception number six for economic development projects. This is for a project north of the airport, currently being developed by Taylor Bowen. It is on sixteen acres. It is an eight to ten million dollar spec building project. Job creation expected to be twenty-five to forty jobs.
Oh, those twenty-five to forty jobs. How, and I, and I know there's no way of knowing. Do you have an idea on what percentage of those jobs will be Washington County residents?
Um, just given on the standing, coming, going of the commuters, you know, we would hope it'd be somewhere around eighty. We have about twenty to twenty-five percent. Terry, in that neck of the county, you're pretty close to Pennsylvania, so there may be a little bit of a difference there. But we would hope at least eighty.
Do you look for approval for submission of this letter?
Correct.
Commissioners, any other comments? Hearing none, motion to approve the letter?
Thank you.
I gotta get a motion and vote. Don't leave us in a hurry. We'd like to. Motion to approve the letter. First and second, on favor, say aye, aye. No, thank you, Jonathan.
Commissioners?
Next up, a little early, but I think I see Mr. Boggs. Would you please come forward? Introduce yourself in the matter.
Chris Boggs, Land Preservation Planner, Department of Planning and Zoning. Today, I bring forward the Safe Historic Antietam Foundation, Inc. Rural Legacy Easement Project. Uh, this is a, this is in our rural legacy area. It is four point two one eight acres. So one of our smaller parcels we are looking to preserve. But the people at, at Shaft came to me and asked if, if D N R would be interested in, in taking the easement and permanently preserving the parcel. I checked with D N R. They said they were good with it, so we decided to move forward. Uh, this project's a little unique because it is a full donation, so there will be no compensation for the landowner for the development rights on this parcel. But we always like to get, get it where we can, so. His property's located on Mills Road in Sharpburg, and it will, uh, it's got some valuable scenic, environmental, and historic characteristics on the property. It's pretty much entirely woodland. It was part of a subdivision done years ago that Shaft ended up purchasing, and there's really not a ton of development potential for it. But it's ideal to preserve just because of its location and, and the route for, and the Battle of Antietam and all of the battles that occurred there on the ri- or on South Mountain and all the gaps there. Um, it's, it's got one development right we'll be extinguishing with the easement. And there are no dwellings or any buildings on the property. So the recommended proposal would be, oh, hold on, first, for fiscal impact. Of course, there's no funds from the state that are going to the, to the landowner, but then we will still be compensated at, at the county level for our compliance and administrative costs. Uh, we do, basically, the way that works for these donations is we just do the easement valuation formula and come up with how much it could be worth if, if they were to sell it as an easement. And then the state will compensate us for all title costs and, and that one, one point five percent compliance and three percent admin cost that, that would be if it were paid in full. Um, so, uh, let's see. Um, moving forward, the recommended motion would be to approve the Safe Historic Antietam Foundation Easement Project in the amount of zero dollars over four point two one eight easement acres. Any questions?
No, I mean, that's a, sounds like a win-win deal. You get paid, they get the land free. Uh, motion is, recommended motion is stated. Is there a second?
I'll second with a question.
Sure.
What, is there a long-term plan for this property? Is it just to preserve it perpetuity? Will it be excavated for, like, archaeological finds or?
Well, it, I mean, it could be if, if that were ever to, to be the case. A lot of the ground around it is either already preserved or it's state ground. So it's kind of, it kind of expands on some already state-owned ground and some other rural legacy projects. So it adds to the, it adds to the group of preserved land there. And of course, the goal for these projects is to preserve large swathes of open space. So it, it helps with our goals in, in that respect.
Okay, first and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye. Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
Thank you.
Running a little early, but I do believe next up is the bid award for laboratory services. Please come forward, introduce yourself. Is everybody here that could eat?
Are you waiting for anybody? Are you waiting for anybody else?
No, Brandy's under the weather, so I'm setting in for her, so.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna represent. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Well, Mark is sitting for Davina and Becky.
Tell them to come, arrive early.
All righty.
Please move forward at your convenience.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Director of Purchasing.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Bureaucratic Management.
Item before you is bid award P U R fourteen ninety-six. Laboratory Services for Water Wastewater Testing for the Department of Water Quality. Recommended motion to award laboratory services for the water wastewater testing for Department of Water Quality to the responsible responsive bidder, A L S Group USA Corporation doing business as A L S Environmental. Of Middletown, Pennsylvania, who submitted the lowest annual total bid in an amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents. As you can see in the ARF, it spells out what the vendor's responsible for picking up samples from the Department of Water Quality and then delivering them back then within fourteen days. It's a one-year contract to commence on May first, and it also has two one-year annual renewals. Also, you can see the method in which the bid was advertised on the various medias and in the local newspaper. Number of persons who downloaded the bid and the number of bids received. Also, it's indicated on the ARF, on the bid tabulation. And the fiscal impact showing where the department will charge the services to be paid out of. And also, you have the bid tabulation of all the bidders who submitted a proposal. That concludes my recommendation for P U R one four nine six.
Just a curious question for me. Did, uh, who had that bid last year, the same people?
Yes, sir.
So this is the second consecutive year?
I think this may be the third year.
Okay. But you, did we have to put it off a bid every year?
We have to put out a bid every three years.
Okay, every three years. Okay, gotcha. That's all I needed. Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second. First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye. No, thank you very much. I believe next up, we're still running a little early. I think we have Jonathan coming in for the expansion of the Hagerstown, Washington County Enterprise Zone. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jonathan Horowitz, Department of Business Development. I am here basically to request the closing of the public hearing for the expansion of the Hagerstown, Washington County Enterprise Zone. Uh, this is going to be a resolution move to adopt the submission of our application to state. And this application was developed between the county and the city of Hagerstown.
Commissioners, thoughts, comments on the resolution?
Yeah, we, we did, we, we did receive, we did receive a few comments, right?
We received three comments from the public?
Could you please read them?
Sure. Comment one is from Mark Dickinson. Uh, request is hereby made to, to add the following properties. Basically, Mark is requesting to add three of his parcels as well into the enterprise zone. He's requesting in this comment that we take a look at adding his parcels into this expansion application. And do you want me to address each one or just read them?
Read them first.
Okay. So that was the basis of Mark's. Uh, Chris Smith, another local developer property owner, has submitted a request to have his property that is off of Colonel H. Henry Douglas Drive to be added to this expansion as well. And then we also had one public comment from Angela Davids. Um, and she basically is just, um, wants to protest the actual development of the Review and Herald property itself. And her stance there is that it's a beautiful property, and she simply just does not want to see it developed into warehouses.
Is there any of those you want to address about the expansion at this time that's not included in the resolution? So would that have to be another day?
I'd be happy to address them now from, from the Department of Business Development standpoint.
On the third question you've read there, lady that doesn't want the warehouses possibly occur there.
Correct.
What that company's trying to do, does it require any zoning changes?
No, it does not. They are in full compliance with the zoning that is existing there.
And said a couple of the other developers want their property included. So what we're voting on today is only specific to.
What was it last, the public hearing last time?
Correct. It's not exactly just the Herald Mail property. These expansions are done by census tracts. So it's not down to the parcel level. So this census tract would include several parcels. Some are in the city and some are in the county, which is why it was a joint effort.
We hit the map last week, I think it was last, week four last, we hit the map. How close are these, just from my curiosity again, how close are these properties of Mr. Smith, Mr., to that map? That enterprise zone map we had?
Uh, Mr. Smith's property, as the crow flies, is probably three miles.
Okay.
Um, and these other properties are on the other side of the county. They're significantly farther away.
Okay.
So today, we're voting on what we.
From the public hearing.
Correct. We're, we're talking about one census tract here, which does include the R N H property.
Didn't I also hear the last time, we're limited into the amount of property we can add to the enterprise zone each, on an annual basis, I suppose?
Yes, Wayne, that is, that's how I was gonna address the other comments, basically. The comments from these other developers, while the Department of Business Development fully supports any good development in the area, uh, we are bound by the state. This is a state-designated area. And there are lots of policies around how and how much we can add at certain times. If we were to take a look at adding anything beyond this census tract that we begin looking at, it would, it would probably require the subtraction of other areas. And what I want the commissioners to be fully aware of is that the entire enterprise zone area is up for its, its standard renewal at the end of two thousand twenty-two. So the county and our department will be submitting a renewal application for, for recomprehensively designing the entire enterprise zone in conjunction with the city of Hagerstown. And that process is ongoing currently. The application is due to the state by the end of two thousand twenty-two. And during that process, we will most, we will most certainly address the developers' inclusion that we've been asked about.
So what I'm hearing now, we just want to move forward, what we talked about last week, and whose others to be considered in the future.
I wanted to ask them about annexations. When does the annexation apply?
The city of Hagerstown annexation? The city of Hagerstown's annexation's policies are all still the same, so, um, once they become contiguous to a parcel, they can, due to their wastewater exception policy, they can require that.
The county commissioners for express approval?
Say that again, Terry, sorry.
The annexation, will the county commissioners have any decisions to make, annexation, anything like that?
I, I do not believe we have much power on that. If, if the city, it, it comes down to the, to the water, EDUs of the water. If, if we need more EDUs to develop a parcel, we have to get those EDUs from the city, and they're, they have a written policy.
My question is, is the property, all of the property in the city already in the city?
This census tract is not all in the city. It's, it's about half and half.
Whether, whether express approval is required would depend on what the proposed city zoning is on the property.
So the contiguous, uh, information will decide all of that property becomes city property. If it was in the county and if it was in the city, I don't understand why there doesn't have to be an annexation in the county unless it's contiguous and then they automatically annex it. Maybe.
Yeah, I think it would be contiguous. The express approval applies when there's a material difference between the county zoning designation and what the city would be proposing after the annexation.
The city may, the city may require an annexation agreement, but not with the county, because it would want the property owner. But with the property owner, that's what they do, as they knew normally.
Commissioners, are you okay with the resolution I was presenting last week? Need a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'm motioning to adopt the resolution for the requested expansion of the enterprise zone within the adjacent to the corporate boundaries of city Hagerstown.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have first and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jonathan, I guess you're coming back?
Yes, I am.
Okay, next on the agenda item. Request funding to implement Maryland Money Market Program. And Leslie, are you joining us still?
Yes.
Folks, introduce yourself in the matter.
Jonathan Horowitz, Department of Business Development.
Good morning Commissioners, Leslie Hart, Department of Business Development. Um, Commissioner Burke, welcome aboard. Um, I have a request today, um, to you for six thousand dollars, uh, to be pulled out of the hotel rental tax. Um, it's for the Maryland Market Money Program. The Maryland Money Market Program is designed to reach, uh, folks that are food insecure.
Yes.
Uh, people who are on SNAP and Farmers Market Nutrition Programs such as WIC and Seniors. Uh, recent coupons and of course SNAP recipients, um, have a limited amount of dollars that they are able to utilize to purchase fresh foods, uh, meats, produce, uh, all those kinds of things that are available at a farmer's market. Um, with the recent pandemic, uh, there has been a substantial spike in the number of people in Maryland and in Washington County receiving SNAP benefits. Um, we, we need, uh, to really focus on those folks because of the food insecurity that we have. Farmers markets are getting ready to start effective in the May timeframe and they will operate through the October timeframe. Um, what I am requesting, the way the Farmers Market Money Program works is for every five dollars that an individual spends utilizing their SNAP or their additional nutrition benefits, they get a matching five dollars. So their five dollars just became ten dollars. Um, it is funded through, um, Smatic and, uh, the Eastern Shore Tri-County Council is who operates the program. Um, I have already been able to secure funds from them to support at least five local farmers markets. And I've also additionally received funding in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars from the Western Maryland, um, R C and D Research Conservation Development Program. That, those particular funds are designed to hire and employ an individual who will operate that program at the farmers markets. Um, it is a seasonal part-time program, part-time position, and they will work at each one of the farmers markets solely operating the Farmers Market Money Program. Um, so what I'm asking of you today is, um, a six thousand dollar, um, motion to, out of the, uh, hotel re- hotel rental tax and to support this program, um, for the twenty twenty-one year. Um, next year, this is, uh, this is a sustainable program. So after this year, the program will become the sole responsibility of all the markets. This is, this is just simply to kick them off this year.
You just need a match.
I do. Um, I already have, um, concurrence from budget and finance. I've also worked with, uh, purchasing and human resources on the hire and the way that we will, uh, identify this individual. So that's what I need today.
Motion to approve is presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I have first and a second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Okay, we are about thirty minutes early. Next agenda item, business request for fund, wait, excuse me, business incentive program for Hancock and Cascade. Jonathan?
Commissioners, Jonathan Horowitz, Business Development again. Uh, this, uh, item being brought to you today is in response to Commissioner comments that were made during open session in the March thirty twenty twenty-one meeting. Uh, the Department of Business Development met with county CFO Sarah Greaves to discuss potential economic development incentive programs for our Hancock and Cascade areas. So after, throughout that discussion, a high-level discussion, we were able to identify two sort of short and versus long-term programs. Uh, so the two ideas that we want to present to you today are a, a financial match program for an incentive of economic development. This would be a lower-cost, shorter-term impact, faster impact program. The other option in front of the Commissioners today is a, uh, obviously a public-private partnerships for infrastructure improvements, which the county has utilized in other areas of the county before. This option would be more of a long-term, higher investment, but higher return option. Uh, but definitely more on the long term. So you have a, a short-term, lower-cost option, and we presented a long-term, higher cost with more returns option. And these are just for discussion today. These are just in response to your inquiries for options.
I, I guess I need a little bit more, I mean, it sounds like on top, I mean, those are two great places to do this, but I need a little bit more elaboration on. The better of the two is the public-private partnership, but that also is a, stretches it out a lot farther, doesn't it?
Uh, you know, Randy, I don't know if I call it better. It's, it's, it's really just a longer-term, tor- term, higher investment, probably greater return avenue to take.
Which one would help those two communities the quickest and the best?
The, the, the matching program most certainly would be much faster, much easier to implement, much easier to manage, and, and return results much more quickly.
Jonathan, um, we have from time to doc- time for different projects all over the county implemented a pilot payment in lieu of taxes. Um, where essentially the increase in tax base, correct me if I'm wrong, Kirk, John, but the increase in tax base, um, is essentially not taxed. That money in turn can go towards financing the cost of the project. Is that?
I think that's.
Yeah, I mean. Normally what happens is, when we've used them in the past, um, it's been the situation where the capital investment is very high. The property appreciates and the benefit of the pilot is that it stre- it, it levels the revenue stream over the course of the project. So there's not a huge investment in capital as well as huge tax payments at the beginning. And then at the end of the life, there's no investments and very small tax payments. What it does is it allocates the taxes that would be due over the life of the project.
I, and I guess that's where I'm going with the, the tax payment that would have to be paid upfront once that development, once the project, uh, manufacturing facility, whatever it may be, is built, and then they have to start paying taxes on that, that structure. If that could be reduced. I'm wondering, are, are these the only two options we could look at? Could we potentially look at, um, for these communities or if other communities are added? Maybe a, a pilot if it creates and generates jobs.
Absolutely. We're, we're willing to look at any programs and, and during the discussion with Sarah, we, we did discuss all the other options. These were just the two that we felt would have the greatest actual impact immediately or long-term. A pilot program, as Kirk was trying to explain, is, is more or less to help the prospect make a business case out of something that would normally have such a high barrier of entry, we, we wouldn't be able to get that type of development here. And, and while I certainly encourage those types of programs, I think that the prod- the type of projects we want to see come out of, the results we want to see come out of this are probably not going to be in that realm. You think more or less like a, like a big solar project, like where the county has done these pilots before, is that to build the, the solar field and to buy all the equipment is just such an upfront cost. And the amount of power generated there's, you know, kind of lower, so it takes longer to get that back, as Kirk said.
I, I think, um, we've also done some pilots for, for other types of projects as well. And in particular, you know, I'm looking in Hancock, as we toured on Friday, the Orchard Business Park area that was just annexed, whereas in the process of being annexed in, to the town limits, there could be a, a number of projects for that one hundred, give or take parcel of land that may benefit from a pilot as well, or something where we reduce taxes because the way I see it, at the end of the day, if that property isn't developed, we don't see a growth in the tax base anyway. But to have that developed, if we forego some tax revenue, but it generates jobs, we do win in the end. Because if we did nothing, maybe that wouldn't be considered a location for a development project to go. So what do we gain if we offered nothing?
And I understand your point. I have worked with several prospects on that pro- on that park. So just in my experience of what business cases they're trying to bring to that, for that development, uh, I, I think that the existing statutory programs that we have through the Department of Business Development are already tax abatement of programs.
Okay.
So yes, a pilot program, and I don't want to downplay a pilot program, are very effective. We've used them before. But we already have statutory programs on the books that will help to make the business case. If that is what they're looking for, is tax abatement or to even their tax payments, to help make their business case to say, yes, we're gonna pull the trigger and do this investment here. We have other programs that kind of address that already, so it's not like we have nothing there. I think more or less what we were getting at with these, and, and we are thinking more or less like what you're thinking too, Wayne, is like the Orchard Business Park was kind of a, you know, a way to frame this for us, is, is a matching program would, would be much faster to get a developer to come in there and say, okay. Because we're waiting about a year for, for water and wastewater at that parcel, which is about right now to start talking to developers to work that parcel, so.
Would a matching program, say number one, to Wayne's example, that would take precedence over, we would not still, would we still offer from our incentive? Would this be the incentive? Would there be anything on, on or above this number one?
We did not discuss that, but that's open for discussion. We, we, this is all for discussion, so it's, it's still open. Nothing's been decided yet.
Yeah, and my thoughts were business developers that are going to be developing the property, they're going to be discussing to you. And even though we may agree to option one, they still have the ability to do all of the options plus the pilot. So you're gonna put together a package for them that's gonna meet, uh, their needs and, uh, give them the ability to move faster rather than be held up.
Correct, Terry. And, and I think what you just said helps to highlight what Sarah, Susan and I were discussing in this meeting is, is what's really the most effective? What, what can we do to get some results out of this now?
We're not, yeah, we're not just restricting ourselves to any one of these options. They're gonna have many, many options and we want the communities to know that we're here to help and there's gonna be, you know, we want to hear what, what you need and what your thoughts are, and then we can go from there.
Absolutely. And anytime, e- every project's different, so we always try to tailor our incentives.
So basically an option package and pick, take, choose your weapons. Choose what helps you the best.
The premise of this is to spur economic growth in those communities now in light of a potential school closing, so we can demonstrate that the economic development's moving in. Correct?
Correct. And if, if, if I were to advertise a match program being available in those municipalities, that, that would definitely spur development.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll just say, I mean, obviously we, we weren't trying to limit, I mean, what I asked staff to do was to come back after the comments that, that the board made several weeks ago, to come back with some additional options other than what we already have and to do things as quickly as we can. So, yeah, these are just some options we came up with. We wanted to keep the discussion going because this is what the board wa- wanted us to do, so. Uh, obviously we can, we can go in any direction you want to go, but we wanted to make sure that we had some options for you and, and, uh, to keep the discussion going, so.
So what, we wanted something more specific brought back? Is that what we're?
Well, I think, I don't know. I know for me, I'm options and give staff the ability to utilize whatever options they need, bring the request back to us and then we can approve from there.
I think.
When you get into the housing, I know, uh, and I brought this up before many, many years ago, you know, back when housing was stagnant, you know, they weren't building after the, I think probably around two thousand and seven. And I always thought, why would we not let them use the first year of their taxes to build a home? So here's a case, I know Cascade, there's gonna be probably a lot of housing built up there. So there's a possible incentive, and I know staff doesn't like to go that route or anything, but my thoughts are, they're gonna be paying taxes on homes and development way past the remaining years that I have. So, you know, I always thought that that would be a nice little incentive to get somebody to build, do some housing, things like that. But that was a thought.
And we, we, as our department has, you know, nothing against residential, it's just not been a focus of the area. But certainly as things have changed in the last twenty-four months.
Well, I mean, it is weird because, you know, I'm sure Cascade's looking at a lot of possible home renovations.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of homes up there.
There's just a lot of things happening in the last twenty-four months.
Could that be?
Really big.
I'm sorry. Could, could that be an option that's explored when staff brings back more recommendations? These are great that they help companies locate, and they obviously create jobs, but if we can provide a tax incentive, both of these outlined communities, uh, we need to find a way to stabilize their population. And certainly bringing jobs into the community can do that as well, but if, you know, after COVID, I've heard a lot of people, a lot of people in the business community talk about there could be a real opportunity in Washington County to have growth for our population, whether it's a good or bad thing, but to see our population increase because people are wanting to leave the more urban areas, to leave the, the large cities and get out in the country, get out in the, the clean air, so to speak. And, um, we could see that opportunity if we could target where we want those, um, may- maybe the housing or set priority areas, and again, as Commissioner Klein said, in an effort to save our schools. If we can target the, the growth in those certain communities, I think that solves a lot of our dilemmas that are on our plate right now.
I, I totally agree, and workforce development and, and available workers is going to be an issue as we now see all these, uh, big companies coming in, they're all starting to do their hiring right now. It is gonna, it is gonna be our next issue.
What's your take on new home construction right now?
It's, it's crazy right now. Of course, the building materials are going out of sight, but I'm telling you, I, of, if I sell seventy homes a year, there's, this past year is fifty, I'm, it's like Wayne just said, coming from out of town for the working remote, there's a new world now. People are working from home, and I can't think of a better place if you have the right cable, which they do, work from home in Cascade or, 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 uh, Hancock. Uh, I mean, I think, I think it's coming. I think we're seeing our population growing. And, and I'm a hundred percent to try to boost those economies in those two towns and get them stabilized. It, it, we win-win on all that.
Are the Commissioners interested? There has been talk in other municipalities and other states about, uh, we're, we're attracting remote workers? Is that something the Commissioners would like to, some, some, some sort of attraction program for that?
As long as my taxes go down.
Always trying to grow the tax base, Terry. We, we certainly are.
Okay, uh, are you clear of any instructions to bring back more details?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this program, is it, um, in my mind, when you were just talking about, I was thinking like it was only business growth. So can a developer of residential properties apply for this?
We didn't, we didn't narrow that down yet, uh, but normally our incentives through my department are based on capital investment and job creation. So they are somewhat tied to employment. Uh, and I think that's just a historical thing that the Commissioners like to see is, you know, somehow tie it back to some job creation for the citizenry. Uh, but we're, we're, we're open to any discussion. I, I per- I personally think, you know, something to do with residential is gonna become important soon as we start running out of workers because we have lots of new jobs coming.
Yes, I'm thinking that a, a developer that builds a house is gonna sell that house ultimately, make a profit off of it, whereas a business, bringing a business in.
I, uh, Kirk, I might have to defer to you or someone on, I guess residential and business taxes are a lot different in terms of what we're turning to spur.
But residential be more complicated. I mean, you have a guy builds a subdivision and he's making his money on his homes. It'd have to be something to attract permanent residents that are actually gonna benefit from living there. It would get, as Charlie said, it would get complicated with the residential, uh, but there's gotta be a way to, to, I mean, you need humans there. And business attracts humans, so I mean.
Well, our department feels that that's probably in the next twenty-four, thirty-six months gonna, gonna be an issue that we're faced with, so, you know, if it's something we should start looking at now, it can't hurt to start looking at things.
And, and my comments on, um, bringing taxes for a year are specific to the Cascade and Hancock area.
Yeah.
And that is how this discussion began, yeah. We try, try not to, we, in- internally also, as staff try not to lose focus that we have good existing programs for the county in general. It's just that these two areas are somewhat underdeveloped and a little bit further away.
If they close the schools, it's gonna crush both those communities. And we need to be on the, be proactive of helping those communities. I mean, it's, we've talked about it for three or four weeks now, so.
I, I would add, if we do something to provide a, a tax offset or something for a new home to be built in one of these communities, maybe this is too far in the minutia of today's discussion, but I think there should also be, it should be framed around a commitment for that homeowner to live there for a certain number of years. You, we need them to be a resident, not just a transient person moving through the community and taking that opportunity for low taxes. The idea would be for a long-term resident.
And, and just to summarize the, the Commissioners' comments, then we, you would like staff to look into possible pilot programs and then something residential spurring? Correct?
Specific to those two areas.
Specific to those two, yeah.
I know Wayne said be a resident for years, but I'm thinking about the Cascade community, uh, there, uh, there's a lot of housing on that, which you base. So I don't know if they're gonna bulldoze it over. I don't know what their plan is with that. I think, uh, two different things. There are. There are already existing, renovating, and once they renovate those properties, they'll be able to get a tremendous increase in tax base or real estate from those properties, compared to what they're assessed at currently. And that will depend on selling them or renting them, like something that's already there, that's a blight, that they're going to improve, I think the rules need to be a little different for those projects, over the newly constructed projects.
And and it could be looked at creatively in terms of S stat valuations prior and afterwards, et cetera.
It's gonna depend on the developer's plans and ideas and thoughts.
All right, do you have a direction?
I do.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, staff will, you know, obvious staff will look through it, it's it's it it'll be, it'll be complicated, but we'll 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 work through that and come back with.
And start somewhere to help.
Right, that's right.
Bring bodies into the community.
Per your, per your direction, that's why we were heading this direction, so.
Next up, fiscal year twenty one bond adjustment. Sarah, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, here to present to you um a budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty one um that has an impact on our upcoming bond sale that will be held in May. Um, as you are aware, FY twenty one bonds were allocated and approved through the budget for fiscal year twenty one in last May of two thousand and twenty. Um, bonds are always budgeted in um the prior year and issued in the um following year. So recently, the Board of Ed brought to you um a budget adjustment that included uh the transfer of funds from Sharpsburg Elementary and Bispa as a result of budgetary savings. The adjustment in front of you um includes the portion of bond funding to Sharpsburg Elementary in the amount of one million eight hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars. The Sharpsburg construction is complete, so therefore, these bonds should not be included in the upcoming sale that we have set for May. Before the county can proceed with the bond sale, a decision must be made on whether to remove this amount from the sale or to redirect it to Board of Education Capital Maintenance Projects. In the past, uh, the Board of County Commissioners have redirected um funding, but that is why I'm here today, to see if there's a consensus from the board, um, otherwise, it would have to be removed from the bond sale in May.
Sarah, I have a question. If we are to allow this to continue to be appropriated towards BOE capital projects, um, do we have discretion over um which projects that money be applied to?
I believe it is within the County Commissioners' discretion to um allocate the funding and restrict it. Um, I don't think there's anything that prohibits that, if that's the board's desire.
I'd like to make a suggestion, see if my fellow commissioners like this idea. Uh, we've heard, going back on the topic of school closures in our Cascade and Hancock communities, part of the reason those schools are being looked at for closure is um deterioration, I suppose, of the school. They've been many years without some needed capital improvements. Could we allocate this money to the Board of Ed, but specify that it go towards um capital project that those two elementary schools under consideration for closure, help alleviate that concern of the condition of the buildings?
I wanna, about to give you, not not to give you an answer, I thought I thought there was two schools involved when they first came in and made their presentation.
Yes, sir, there are, and they will still probably come back to the Board of County Commissioners for approval for the other um amounts, because this is only the portion that affects me in my bond sale. There were other um uh um revenues, there were other um revenues from excise tax and also general fund that went into Sharpsburg and the UIP that they were asking to have redirected as well. I'm not here on their behalf, I'm on the here for um the county and our current bond sales, so it only, what I'm here today for only is contributing to the bond money that was involved in that transfer request.
So just to summarize what Commissioner Kiefer was saying, fiscal impact, one one million eight hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars. Could we say, fine, but it has to go to capital improvements of Cascade and Hancock? Can we do that?
I think so.
I think that's what we should do.
Sarah motion to the State Senate?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget judgment as slightly modified as presented to allow the Board of Ed that capital monies. However, it will be targeted towards Cascade and Hancock Elementary School, um, improvements that are needed.
Sir, second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, I do have, I do have a question. Uh, is there any way that uh you would know if the board has already appropriated money for Hancock Elementary in their cap- in their current capital budget book already earmarked for Cascade?
I have that information upstairs. I don't have it with me, but I could get it for you probably. I think I have a listing of all of their capital maintenance projects that they anticipated on doing for the next ten years.
So would you want this in addition to what's already in the capital?
In addition, absolutely.
Okay, um, you have a first and a second, right? We have first and a second. Any other comments?
One comment if I can make, uh, this is the portion allocated to the Sharpsburg Elementary School, correct? And I think um it's appropriate that the schools we're looking at here, those elementary schools are all in our outlying communities. So Sharpsburg, they received a new elementary school, Cascade in the upper northeast corner, and Hancock in the upper northwest corner. This money really targeted our outlying communities in total, the three points in Washington County. I think that's a good thing.
All right, I have first and a second. Any further comments? Are you done? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I bow, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah, thi- thi- this will allow you, now the commissioner made that motion, this will allow us to go ahead and transfer that money and do the bond sale.
That's correct.
So that will be part of the bond sale.
It will be part of the upcoming bond sale in May, yes. One of the requirements whenever we have adjustments is that they occur before the bond sale, and we provide all the documentation to our bond counsel.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item, we're twenty-five minutes early, but I think we'll proceed if all's okay with that. Next up, fiscal year twenty twenty-two general fund budget.
Thank you, Commissioners. Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer. Um, I'd like to take a couple minutes before the budget discussion to talk about county funding for the Board of Education. Basically, um, the county's overall commitment. I'm gonna ask in the back if, yep, they can flip the slide. Okay, great, flip the slide again for me, please. Thank you. Maybe a little bit difficult on the screen to read that, but uh the county commissioners are committed to education. Um, we appropriate forty-nine percent of the budget to education. Uh, that forty-nine percent's made up of forty-three percent to the Board of Ed, five percent to HCC, and one percent to the cost for libraries. The second largest expenditure that the county has, um, next to education is law enforcement, which comes in at fifteen percent of the budget. Um, so as you can see on the screen, uh, half of the pie, almost half of the pie is dedicated to education. Please flip the slide. The amount per pupil funding is shown on your screen with the bars. Um, you can see that this funding has increased substantially over the years. The county currently provides forty-seven hundred dollars per child, and the state provides eighty-three hundred per child, which is a combined amount of thirteen thousand dollars per student. Interesting, if you look over to um the the chart next to that, is that the enrollment has only increased about three percent over the past ten years, while the cost per pupil has increased for the county by fifteen percent for the same time period. Next slide, please. Here's a chart showing history of wage increases. It is true that the county's proposing a step in a cola for employees in fiscal year twenty-two. This chart in front of you provides a twenty-year history of the county's annual increases as compared to some of those in our peer group. The top line, which is the blue, represents the Board of Education increases. The line below that represents Frederick County, followed by the yellow line, which is the city of Hagerstown. And finally, the bottom line in red or orange on your screen is Washington County. This shows you that if, oops, go back, yep, this shows you that if all entities began in nineteen ninety-nine with a wage of thirty-one thousand, the Board of Ed would be paying around seventy-two thousand for that um wage today, and the county would be paying fifty-nine thousand. So it's it's a, it's a nice illustration of um, you know, the differences in our increases over time.
So the basically Board of Education got a lot more money than we did, racist. That's a good summary, right?
It, their increases have been more than the county's, yes, absolutely. Next slide, please. With that, this information for WCPS employee count has come from our annual official statement. Um, so as long as the information that we've received was good at the time, these should be accurate figures. Um, you know, the employee count at the Board of Ed does show an increase over the last several years. Um, I do believe this includes part-time positions. Um, on the next chart, on the chart next to that, you can see the starting teacher salary, which is currently at fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. If you apply the same wage for a twelve-month period, because we know that amount is for about approximately ten months, then an annual salary, then you would have an annual salary of sixty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Next slide, please. The chart on the left shows funding history for the Board of Education over time. Uh, the different colors on the bars represent a few different things. In two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, which is what you can see, you have some bars with yellow on them. The county contributed to other costs such as buses, nurses, and crossing guards. That amount was separate from our maintenance of effort. However, in two thousand thirteen, which is the first bar that you see with orange, the county was mandated to take on additional costs related to teacher pension. As you looked here's sixteen and seventeen, which is the last row, the last bar with um orange on it. You can see that the orange line's removed and it's replaced with blue in two thousand seventeen. This reflects that pension amount being combined into our maintenance of effort. The chart next to that shows that Washington County, again, is coming in providing forty-three percent of budgeted dollars to education for the Board of Education. You can see Washington County is in the dark blue. If you look at all of the counties in Maryland, Washington County ranks higher than half of them. And if you look at Washington County's peer group, which are in light blue, if you look at Garrett and Allegheny County, Washington County far exceeds uh their contribution of their budget at thirty-three and thirty-five percent. And we much closer reflect um Frederick County, which is forty-six percent, a little bit higher than ours, but there's a case to be made that the county does heavily invest in Board of Education. Next slide, please. These slides represent um fiscal note information from House Bill thirteen hundred related to the Kerwin Commission. Um, you know, there are prob- there has been updates um over this current legislative session for these charts, but I think they're still significant. Um, you know, the first chart shows the direct state aid um for Board of Educations uh and an increase from what the current law is. Um, and if you add up those increases over that ten-year period, so if you add up fiscal year twenty-two of seventeen and a half, twenty-three of twenty million, you know, you're gonna see combined, they reach over three hun- Again, I just bring this forward to you today, Commissioners, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about county funding for education. Um, you know, I think that the Commissioners are invested in education. I think the numbers show that. Um, our per pupil amount increases annually, um, and I think it's important that we share that information with the public. Are there any questions on the information that was presented today?
Just maybe, how much will the Kerwin affect us?
Well, there's been some new charts out. Now, the charts that were provided last year um showed that Kerwin would affect Washington County by our current trend, which is two and a half percent per year. So as long as we maintain that current trend, uh, we should be okay, but I did have a chance to look in the, I don't know if it's Kerwin two, or, you know, I was trying to find some additional information, and there were some increases in there in the out year. So I have to look at that a little bit further to see if that's, you know, a million more than our two and a half percent trend, uh, because if you look in it, some some of the time it'll say zeros across all ten years. Well, that doesn't mean zero additional dollars, it just means zero percent more than what you've been doing, so, um, definitely two and a half percent per year, there may be increases um other than that, though, with the new legislation that was passed um this session.
Sarah, do you have a clicker where you can go back some slides? Are you able to do that?
Um, I I'm not sure if this is working, but um the folks in the back, yeah, which slide would you like, sir?
That one right there.
Okay.
I I hear a lot, and just so you can help us clarify and and understand a little better, I know I've heard it before, but it's al- always good to restate it from time to time, uh, that the county commissioners, a different group of county commissioners than than this group, um, stopped funding for school nurses, buses, and crossing guards. Um, it and it seems like in the in the chart that you you shared with me a while back, um, there was a transition from the county paying for those items and a switch to the county paying for part of the pension costs for the teachers. There was a trade made at some point between the yellow and the orange bars, but funding still continued to trend upwards.
That's correct.
So is is it fair when it's said that we cut funding for the school nurses and crossing guards? That was substituted for a different allotment of money that the Board of Ed received from the county, correct?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, I mean, you know, the Board of Ed, you know, did become responsible for those costs, but at the same time, the county didn't reduce the funding towards education. Um, you know, it was redirected.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioners, any questions for this? And not Sarah, please continue.
Okay. There we go. All right, thank you, Commissioners. Um, here before you for draft four of the general fund budget. Fiscal year twenty-two general fund proposed budget is currently two hundred and fifty-four million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Two million, three hundred, ninety thousand dollars remains in the twenty-two budget for one-time appropriations. I was here a couple times before you, and we discussed a couple ways that we could use um the excess funding. I would like to-
What was that amount again?
Uh, two million, three ninety, nine eighty. Two million, three hundred, ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, as discussed previously, this funding is available for fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, we expect funding to be available in twenty-three and twenty-four, uh, but in twenty-five and twenty-six in the five-year plan, we do still have a million-dollar deficit. I believe it's one point three million, um, and that is attached to the RF as well, um, as we move forward. So some of the options for consideration for the board for this one-time funding includes additional pension contribution, uh, funding for capital projects, whether it be for the Board of Education or other outside agency one-time needs. Um, the economic development uh point that you just heard from Mr. Horowitz, uh, you know, that incentive, I believe, was to come from this one-time funding. And then, of course, we heard earlier from Ms. Buchanan on the COF funding, and the board appropriated fifty-five thousand of this towards that effort with the forty-five thousand remaining um to be appropriated. So I'd like to take a couple minutes just to ask the board what your thoughts are on the one-time funding and the allocation of those funds.
Yeah, I have a thought. On the one-time, well, I have a question. On the one-time funding, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to use it this particular upcoming year.
No, sir, you can appropriate to capital, and it can stay in reserves.
We just appropriated ten million dollars of surplus to capital.
Yes, sir. For designated projects. This would stay in reserves to be used at a later time for a one-time.
Why couldn't we take that, why couldn't we take that money and use it for future years to pay our va- our uh firefighters?
Because this is one-time funding, we would always recommend from a finance level that one-time funding is used for one-time projects and not for recurring expenditures. It's how you get some-
But we could.
You could. I wouldn't recommend it, but you could.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think on how to get me in out-years where I don't have to worry about, uh, you know, for the next six, eight years, I ha- I don't have to worry about how I'm gonna fund our firefighters.
This funding would not even provide for one full year of firefighters.
But it's close. You need about twenty se- well, how much you need for one, one year?
In the current year, you need two point seven. If there are wage increases-
Why would we need two point seven? I thought that was a grant.
Oh, that is a grant. Yes.
For three years.
Three years of a grant. Yeah.
So my thoughts were, add a little bit to that, that gets us a fourth year. You have so- uh, you put ten, uh, these are just my thoughts. I'm not asking for agreement. Uh, you have ten million dollars in the capital of, of a surplus in the capital. I mean, we could easily set that program up for-
That ten million has already been appropriated to projects, so it's not available for use.
We voted on that, these projects?
Yes, in the beginning of February.
Did I support them? I didn't support them.
Yes, sir. I think you did.
I voted against the ten million dollars going, uh, I thought the ten million should have gone back to the taxpayers.
Okay, maybe you didn't. Okay, maybe you didn't.
They were just some of my thoughts. You asked us, uh, for our thoughts on, uh, one-time expenditures, so. To me, uh, I wanna make sure that I-
I think the problem with, you know, some of taking money from reserves and using it for operating cost is, you know, once you get into years five and six and seven, you have yourself a problem. Um, because you can't sustain yourself using reserves, and that would be my concern from a financial standpoint.
I think, though, you're taking money that was in the budget, though, and you're just putting it in reserve. So it's not like it was already in reserve and you're taking it out. In other words, you're, you're throwing that money back into a reserve account, but yet it was already spoken for at one point. That makes sense?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's one-time funding, um, best practice is to use it towards a one-time project.
One thing that concerns me about one-time funding, um, what is truly one-time funding? Some capital projects will continue to need operational expenses. You know, if we build new roads, new bridges, that's great, but then that's new roads that we have to maintain. That at some point down the road will need repaved, um, or rebuilt, or ex- something. So, uh, I just, when we say one-time, I'd like to be careful about some of those one-time expenses, why they may show in capital will be, will still require additional funding down the road.
That's true. There is maintenance costs related to, um, some one-time projects. For instance, uh, the tw- thirteen million dollar police fire and emergency services training facility, that's gonna increase our operating cost by approximately four hundred thousand. That's a recurring cost. That was a one-time cost, and then it would be a recurring cost. So absolutely, um, that does occur.
Did we not discuss putting some of that in retirement pension?
We did, and that is an option.
Isn't that pretty critical?
I think it's critical. We're fifty-three percent funded for our pension, um, so-
What's, what level should, would you recommend?
I'm sorry, sir?
Our pension percent.
What would I like our pension percent to be? A healthy pension percent is eighty percent. Um, we do have a plan in place, uh, to build ourselves up to that, but I think that, that it's a reality that the Commissioners definitely should be aware of. Um, you know, fulfilling the obligations that we have to our employees. And every little bit helps. The sooner the money goes into the pension fund, the sooner it starts earning interest and the more compounding impact it has.
Is fifty-three percent critical?
Because what's more important than the fifty-three-
I mean, is it, it, we had a critical stage, only having fifty-three percent.
I would say what's most critical is that we have a plan in place to fund it. While it will take twenty years, we have a plan. So I, you know, I'm not gonna say it's absolutely detrimental. I don't want to-
If we do nothing, it would be critical.
Well, if we, if we did not fund it, that would be critical.
And as people retire, that fund draws down, correct?
Um, sometimes it's a, it's a balancing act, and there are a lot of actuarial assumptions that go into that. Um, sometimes those assumptions in the past have been inaccurate, um, or did not reflect actual results. And so, you know, we may have been higher funded before, but then our funded ratio came down because some of those assumptions were off.
What's an example of something that was inaccurate, that adversely affected our pension funding?
When we changed actuaries back, um, maybe it was like four years ago, um, the new actuary discovered that the liability was not accurately reflected for the drop participants in the plan. And so that contributed, I think, to several percentage points drop in our pension-funded ratio. I think it was five percent point drop. Um, so let's say if we were at sixty-five, you know, it would have dropped to sixty because of that, um, liability not being accounted for. Um, so there have been things like that that have happened. Um, occasionally, the actuaries do, um, studies and they revise their assumptions to be more in line with actual experience. Um, I believe that happened in two thousand eighteen or nineteen. And, um, you know, some of those is like the mortality rates, um, wage, some of those things go into that assumption, um, and they revise those estimates, and that contributes too. Another main thing that contributed was we used to have a seven point seven five percent assumed ra- rate of return. Um, that rate of return was not being met. That goes back into the assumptions, um, that are used. So that's, you know, that needed to be lowered. We lowered it to seven point five percent, and then we lowered it again to seven point two five percent. What that does is it increases the liability. And when it increases the liability, but we don't increase our assets, the funded ratio goes down.
Sarah, um, retiree colas, that's something we discussed the other day. There was a couple-year period where the Commissioners approved a three percent increase back-to-back years.
That's correct.
Um, that also hurt our ratio as well, correct?
Well, it definitely impacted it, yes. I mean, those three, those retiree colas, they're not assumed in our plan. We don't have that assumed, um, in our plan from the actuary's perspective anywhere. And so what happens is when those retiree colas are provided, um, they have to be paid for over a three-year period. The costs of them are not amortized over a fifteen-year period like some of the other costs. And so it's a direct hit, um, to our actuary-determined contribution for the next three years pretty heavily.
So does our actuary assume that there will be no colas?
That's correct. Our actuary assumes there will be no retiree colas.
Okay.
Only, um, potential colas for employees, active employees.
So some of the ways we can help improve this number is being a, just a bit more conservative in a number of things, including retiree colas, including pay raises in general.
The, um, the fifty-three percent, let me be clear, uh, comes from our financial statements for our funded ratio, and that is based on GASB sixty-eight. And that includes, because it is required by GASB, to include an assumption for what we've done in the past. And what we've done in the past is an approximate, on average, one point two percent retiree cola. So some years we would have none, other years we may have a two percent or a three percent. Averaging out that is about one point two percent. The fifty-three percent includes a one point two percent assumption for cola. The actuary does not, and so their funded ratio is a little bit higher. Theirs is about fifty-eight percent. So keep that in mind as we discuss this. There's about five or six percentage points between the two. So if we don't give retiree colas, I would say you're more in line with a fifty-eight percent funded ratio than the fifty-three. But because we have historically, those numbers are included in our statements.
That, uh, two million three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, can that be used? If you could put two million in retirement, right? And then you could put, you could, you can diversify that. I mean, we got an email from the sheriff today where s- now, because of the past legislation, higher pays in Frederick County, we, we got a pretty good email from Sheriff Maldor, that his department could be, you know, losing officers or deputies or, or, you know, underpaid. I don't know, everybody needs body cams now, it sounds like. Everybody needs this and that could, I mean, can we help somewhere in that realm of the activity?
Again, m- my, my thoughts would be no, because that's a recurring expenditure. And unless it was a one-time stipend of some sort. A one-time stipend of some sort, uh, would be okay, but not if it's re- recurring. I've, I've seen, um, an article or a couple things in the past about, um, drivers for the, uh, Board of Education. I think that they're starting around eighteen dollars an hour, and I think our drivers are fourteen. So I think it's something that, you know, it's not just related to the police department.
Like, you could give a, a hiring stipend, maybe, just a one-time.
Yes. You could. Absolutely. That's one time-
Brady, I've been a Commissioner since two thousand and six. I've heard the same discussions since two thousand and six.
Right.
We're never, ever paying as much as the next county.
Yeah, but now legislation's really putting up, this new legislation with, uh, police bill rights, that's, that's, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, I understand, and I get all of that. I get all of that.
Yeah.
And, uh, but we're gonna be faced with that argument next year, the year after. We never give enough of money. Uh, you know, we only have what we have.
Do you not think it's gonna get worse, though, with the, with the way the country's going, that we're gonna be losing fire, rescue, police?
Uh, I think, I think every, I think if you look at every county-
Is this the worst you've ever seen it?
Um, I can't say if it's the worst.
Of course, I've ever seen it. I'm seventy.
Yeah.
So, I'm just preparing.
I remember back during two thousand seven, it was pretty bad. You know, when we were going through the downturn in the economy and all of that there. Uh, so to, for me to be able to say one year was worse than the other, I'm having a difficult time. But the facts are, we only have so much money. We can only do what we have.
I understand that.
I'm certainly not for increasing taxes.
No, I'm not either.
I'm for trying to figure out a way to keep more of the money in my, the employees of Washington County. Everybody's income. We talked about earlier water sewer rates. All of our fees, all of our rates keep going up. Taxes are going up. Income's really not keeping pace.
But if, you know, Terry, in real, real life, I could ask a hundred citizens out there if they're, they're willing to pay forty to sixty cents a day to have somebody show up at their house, a first responder, every one of them would be get- thrown two quarters at you.
Okay, and then I've thrown out suggestions that, that has never got any traction. I've thrown out suggestions. I would never increase taxes. But we could very easily put in a tax statement, asking people if they would like to increase their property taxes. And if they would, if they would voluntarily want to do that, I'm all for that. Uh, I have no problem going something like that. I'm not gonna set to increase taxes. We could generate possibly millions of dollars that way, and that would be through you receiving a tax bill, asking for, uh, an emergency services, uh, tax increase on your property taxes, and you would have the right, uh-
We've never increased property taxes. Twenty years.
Well, Republicans have never increased any taxes in Washington County.
And they've increased property taxes in twenty years, forty to sixty cents a day, to make sure we have fire, rescue, police, and a deficit. We had four hundred thousand dollar deficit.
They're paying that now.
But Commissioner Wagner, also keep in mind, without raising the rate on a per-year basis, the county is generating seventy million dollars more a year than that historical timeframe that you just mentioned, because property values increase, because wages increase. So what we're taxing is valued at more, so our, even without a rate increase, we do generate more money.
There's no doubt about it. E- economic development adds money to it.
Just keep that in mind. And, you know, I, I've read the sheriff's email as well, and it, it's, it's something that we've heard before. Frederick County pays more than Washington County. I bet you Allegheny County's trying to keep up with Washington County. I bet Frederick County tries to keep up with Montgomery County, and Montgomery County keeps up with what, DC?
You know, our, our first responders, though, are under attack. Nobody in this room can deny that. They're under attack. We just proved it in legislation this week. They're under attack. I've never seen that before. I've never seen that before. All of our first responders are under attack. So I think we've really gotta be diligent and we don't let the, anything we do money-wise benefits the citizens. We're not doing this to buy a new Lamborghini. We're doing this to make sure the citizens are taken care of. It's all directed to the citizens. Everything I do is directed at a citizen. I'm giving you a better service. Would you pay forty cents a day like I, I voted for two years ago to have an ambulance show up at your house, or a police officer? I know you guys have heard the argument, but it's getting worse, guys. It's getting worse. Watch the news. See what's happening in the country. We gotta take care of our, and anything we take from them, from the county, we, we deprive the citizens of services. What if we eliminate, there's always waste. There's always waste. I, you know, I'll nail every, every ar- What if you eliminate a couple people to give more money to fire and rescue? Then citizens suffer. Trees are down. Potholes are there. Snow's not being removed. You know, I, I know you've heard it, Terry. You've been in this a long time.
I've heard it. Yeah, I've heard it.
But I live in the community, you know. I contact a lot of people every day.
Well, the facts are, we didn't have to raise income taxes.
I think we did.
Well, no, we didn't. We have, look at the surplus we have.
What?
Well, explain, explain the surplus, because that's an official-
I'd like to talk about the surplus.
Let me hear about the surplus.
We had a three point nine million dollar deficit.
First year, he wanted to do was make, make some adjusted, uh, adjustments back then that would have easily-
I think anything we do, we defund first responders and police.
Oh, I disagree with you.
First of all, that, that, that income tax rate raise, because the former minister, Rob Slocum, presented us in February twenty nineteen with the three point nine million dollar shortfall in revenue. And at that time, the SAFER grant was not supposed to be a hundred percent funded. So income tax rates would make up for that three point nine million dollar shortfall. And the two point seven million, we had to pay over three years for the SAFER grant. Am I proximate rightly on those numbers?
Please, please keep in mind, Commissioners, for fiscal year twenty-one, the current year that we're in, the only reason we have a surplus is not because we didn't anticipate this money coming from the tax increase. We did anticipate it coming. We wrote down our revenues to protect ourselves against COVID-nineteen. Revenues came in over what we wrote them down, but we still expected them. We had a five-year plan in place. We have increased our expenditures over eighteen million dollars over the past two years. Capital, thirty-three firefighters, seven EMS, five other new positions, P-twenty-five lease that we expect, police fire and emergency services training facility. All of these things are gonna add recurring costs to the county. Um, and the increase that you see in twenty-one, the reason we had that ten million dollar adjustment, wasn't because, you know, we didn't really expect that money. It wasn't over what we expected. It's not a recurring surplus. It's gonna be absorbed with all of these commitments that we've already made as a county. The February distribution is only the result of state legislative changes that happened in twenty twenty as related to pass-through entities. There was a nine million dollars appropriated to the county because of these pass-through entities. They had paid their tax liability in December rather than quarterly. What does that mean for the county? It doesn't mean it's additional funding that's gonna be recurring. It means it's a change in the way the funding's being distributed. Instead of getting it in four quarterly installments, we're getting it in a lump sum. That means lower quarterly distributions going forward. That was also recommended from the state. Do not bank on this money coming in addition. You need to understand that this is gonna offset in future quarters.
Sarah, if I could just jump in, you know, one thing that I pride your department on and, and departments across the county, part of the reason, I believe it was a twelve and a half million dollar surplus that we had in our fiscal year that ended July first, or, or June thirtieth. Um, initially, we put three million dollars, I believe, into capital, and we, we came back and put the other ten million dollars into capital. Part of that surplus was because, correct me if I'm wrong, not only were revenues a little higher, but because the county was also able to cut some expenses. We had some positions that went vacant and unfilled for a, a, a number of months.
We did.
We had, um, we had just expenses in general. We were able to tighten the belt.
We had hiring freezes.
Just, just a moment. That's a great thing, that we were able to tighten the belt and still provide those services to our citizens that they needed. I think we've proven that we can be, work on a leaner budget. That's all I'm saying. I think we've proven that fiscal year that ended last summer, where our revenues were a little higher than anticipated, our expenses were less than anticipated, proved that we can make those cuts.
Just from an employee perspective, that's all this is. When we have vacancies, other employees have to step up and take care of that. And that can happen for a short period of time. But expecting that to happen for a long period of time, I think is unrealistic, from an employee's perspective. There are vacancies that we have right now that we could say, we're gonna do a hiring freeze, but some of those vacancies are needed positions. Some of those vacancies are responsible for meeting state requirements, um, you know, or think about the NPDES permit that we have coming up. I think we have to meet requirements by twenty twenty-four. Those are, there's two positions in our fiscal year twenty-two budget to help meet those goals, those requirements. If we don't have employees to do some of this work, we're not gonna meet some of the requirements that we have that are mandated by the state. That's a concern.
And I know all the Commissioners are getting phone calls. It's things that aren't happening. You know, there'll be planning, zoning, let's, can we work the health department, even though it's not us, to help us get this stuff done? I'm getting, I got e- two emails this week. There's, little Johnny's gonna get run over there speeding through my neighborhood. Okay, I'll make one phone call to the sheriff, and guess what? There's three cruisers out there for three days. He had the manpower. He won't have that. Uh, uh, that worries me. It really does, guys. It worries me.
Can I, uh, can I say something? Um, I don't think there's anybody around this table or in county that wanna do anything to public safety. And, and to constantly dwell on that is fear mongering. And, and to constantly dwell on that is fear mongering.
I disagree with that right away, I can't have you make that accusation, not like that, that's not fair to say, you're first meeting here, and you're accusing us of fear mongering?
No, I agree with it, I agree with it. Can I finish?
And you're accusing us of fear mongering?
No.
That's what you just said, it, that's, you need to retract that statement, that's not fair, Charlie.
In a way, that's what it is, because it's conjecture. It's conjecture.
No, it's not conjecture, you're first meeting here, and you're accusing us of fear mongering. Thank you for.
Listen, you can take it any way you want, the other thing is.
I will, and I did take it.
You can't sit there and only focus on, and the other thing with this whole thing is, everybody's focusing on the money that we have right now. Nobody's thinking, Amazon's coming in, all these other areas are coming in, uh, what's going on up in Hancock, what's gonna happen in Cascade? All these extra areas of revenue, and, you know, I, I respect Randy, I, I, probably I know him better than anybody else on this board, but to sit there and say that, you know, we're not gonna have this service or that service, I don't think is a fair, a fair statement.
But it's fair, you weren't here last, this past year when we were failing calls, we weren't getting people. And if it was your wife, your child, you, me, whoever, laying there waiting for an ambulance, and that, that might be fear mongering, but it happens, it happens all the time. We failed calls, what do you think we're concentrating on this fire and rescue for? Now, I'm not doing it cause I'm in love with fire and rescue, we need them, we failed calls, you need to talk to our directors.
I'm suggesting we cut in that area, but there are other areas that if you cut, they're in.
If you cut, then you're gonna collateral damage, there's always waste, always waste.
I, I agree exactly, the emergency service should be at the, one of the forefront fronts of our responsibility, I have no problem with that. And I would never, ever cut my emergency services, I'm never going to be interested in cutting anything from the, uh, the thirty-three firefighters that we're going to hire. All I'm saying is, we need to study our budget, we need to cut our, we need to quit spending, number one, we need to quit spending and focus on the amount of money that we actually have to work with and prioritize, and we could easily, I mean, I'm certainly never, ever not gonna support my firefighters or my, my emergency services, and they're gonna be my, one of my top priorities, they always have been since two thousand and six, and they're always going to be. That's all I'm saying, is we gotta reprioritize, there's, I took a class at Mako, probably, I don't know, six years ago. And, and this was probably toward the end of the recession, and the instructor emphatically just emphasized, government minimum at all levels, minimum ten percent waste. All we have to do is start going through our budget, line by line, line item, the commissioners need to engage in that, and we need to start looking at our budget.
Terry, I would never argue that, never argue that.
We're on a agreement, eighty percent of our budget's up, dog.
I think, coming off a pandemic and not, or not even coming off of it yet, it sounds like, just seeing where we're at, we just better be careful, we don't know what the collateral damage will be.
But that's one of the reasons I'm interested in rolling back the tax rate, the income tax rate, is because of the pandemic.
That's right.
You know, it's costing me more and more, you know, I need more and more.
If you roll it back, you know you're gonna lose, to two point eight, you're gonna lose seventeen million dollars, you know that, right?
I don't think it's seventeen.
It is seventeen million dollars, and.
If we roll it back, seventeen million bucks.
Okay, so, let me ask, let me ask you another question, okay, so, twenty twenty-one, it looks like our budget was two hundred and thirty-five million.
That's right.
Twenty twenty, it was two hundred and thirty-three million, this year, it's two hundred and fifty-four million.
That's right.
Okay, so, what's it, what's the product, uh, projection for next year?
The change, um, the projection for twenty-three is two sixty, um, and the difference is where that money, or where the, why that budget increased. It increased because we restored capital funding, we had no funding going to our capital projects, and these are capital projects, mind you, that require cash, not roads, not bridges. These are cash required, meaning they're equipment for our highway personnel, um, they're systemic projects out of the detention center. They are five percent matched for airport projects that we get six million dollars in funding for, they're matched for parks and rest.
But that shouldn't be part of the eighteen million increase.
It is, it is part, we had no money in twenty-one's budget for capital, none, except for what went to the police fire.
No, no, I'm talking about the airport, I was, I was referring to the airport, that was, that's already factored in, that's an incurring cost, isn't it? The five percent?
The five percent is for capital, on the operating side, we don't contribute anything to airport right now from the general fund, but the capital side is included. So, we've restored capital funding, we've increased EMS personnel by seven, we've increased firefighter personnel by thirty-three. We have, um, the police fire and emergency services training facility that's coming online next spring, there's money to that. We've increased volunteer incentives by four hundred and fifty thousand, we've increased costs for volunteers by fifty thousand for cancer screenings. We've done a third-party review for fire, fire and rescue expenditures, which is a hundred thousand, we've had four new call takers, we've had a new CAD IT person, um, for public safety. We've had fire operation costs increasing for part-time and overtime, we've had employee steps and colas, that's true, we have had employee steps and colas.
Can we talk about that for a second, a, a couple of years ago, we revised our wage and step scale increase to look at a two and a half percent. Uh, it was a three and a half percent between the steps, is that right?
That is correct. Why we, go ahead.
So, I, I think we did the two and a half percent to be more in line with some other instances, I think the Board of Ed was two and a half percent, um, I may be wrong on that, but.
What we were finding was that there was an imbalance between the cola and the step, and that the three and a half percent step allowed no room for a cola to be provided. So, the problem there is to strike a balance, because when you have a cola and you have no step, then you have seasoned employees making the same amount at the minimum that new employees are making, I had that in my, um, office, we had a three-year employee, we had a new employee come in, they're making the same wage because we only gave colas, cause that's all we could afford. When you have a step only and no cola, then you don't ever increase the scale, so you fall out of line with your peers. We reduced it to set a balance so that we could try to provide both a step and a cola annually.
And I, I think we were very fortunate to be in a position to do that, especially during the pandemic, when many companies, we did not, we, we didn't fill vacancies, but we didn't lay off employees, I know many people who were laid off from their jobs, we didn't cut pay, I know many people whose, whose salary, their hourly rate or their annual salary was cut, so that business could get by during the recession, so we didn't have to do that, we didn't have to, because we're government. And, and government has, it, it seems like government thinks it has an unlimited tax base, an unlimited source of funding, an unlimited source of revenue, but at the end of the day, it's taxes from its people, so I think, you know, as Commissioner Burkett said, you know, during the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic, I think our citizens are due a little bit of a tax reprieve, we just talked about possibility of, um, giving funding, and it's a great program, great plan, giving funding to businesses. Um, giving economic incentives for them to come here, and that's important, don't get me wrong, but what about economic incentives for our citizens to live here? You know, I, I think that's something we need to consider as well.
Can I, uh, can I, uh, Terry was talking about ten percent waste in the county, can you please share with the other commissioners what you shared with me last week about this idea? I've, I've been told that on average, there are thirty vacant positions in the county, uh, and you shared with me that there's a way of removing them from the budget, uh, uh.
I.
So, that you have a more realistic view of the budget, uh, can you share that with the?
What we were speaking about was, um, budgeting for turnover, the county in the past has not budgeted for turnover, so while we know we do have some vacancies um, that occur annually, uh, base, you know, can be different departments, maybe one year it's more heavy in highway, maybe another year, um, you know, a different department. We do have vacancies every year, now, the county hasn't budgeted for vacancies, there's a couple of reasons that are pro- probably why. Um, so, you know, when we lose employees, we have to pay out vacation, accrued vacation, accrued personal time. Some positions require us to pay, um, another employee an increase, so there's flexibility there. If you don't budget for the vacancies, then you have the money available to do those types of policy-driven items, um, so that's something. Um, we sometimes, depending on the position, can incur overtime, so for instance, in my department, you know, a higher level position, you know, whether they work overtime or not, they may not get overtime, but in the sheriff's office, when there's vacancies, they may incur overtime, same with EMS. Um, so that vacancy savings does provide some flexibility. Also, as the commissioners are aware, during the year, a lot of items do come up, um, that need funding or required funding. A lot of the times that these items come up, they're a priority, because if they weren't a priority, the commissioners would push them off to the next budget cycle. But sometimes they come up, and they come to me and ask, where are their savings, and a lot of times, those savings come from vacancies. So, yes, it's true that we can budget for turnover, and that'll reduce our budget, it'll also reduce flexibility for the commissioners.
I would, my last comments, and I'll get off of it, is we would go back to two point eight, we're gonna, it's just seventeen million, if we go back to three, it's about ten million. So, rolling back a little bit, and Terry, I, I know, I know you believe this, you'll never defund fire and rescue, but if, if we go back that much.
There's not gonna be money.
And we def, and, and somebody's gonna take a critical hit, and it's not gonna be a couple employees, if we have to make up seventeen to ten million, we're defunding somebody.
Well, for instance, our outside agencies that we, um, provide funding to, they're our community partners, we provide about eighteen million in funding to our outside agencies, not including the Board of Education, a twenty percent cut on eighteen million is around four million dollars, um, in cut. So, if each agency would take a twenty percent cut from the county, what would that look like, and how would that affect the services that they provide to our citizens? I think that's part of the conversation, because the bulk of our budget, we can't touch, um, you know, we give ten million to HCC, they also keep the rates low for in-county, um, you know, people to attend the school, would that mean that rates would go up? I think everything that we do has an impact on our community, and that's something that should be considered as we make these decisions.
I would just wish everybody would just take this year, get out of this pandemic, and look at every line item we vote on, and think, and have this discussion the next budget year, that's what I'd like.
And Randy, what I would be interested in is rolling back the tax rate, and then taking the year to do what you just suggested, line by line item. And then, in one year, if we need to increase the taxes, then we can talk about that.
I'm sure we're not gonna reduce them and increase them again, that's the hardest thing I ever did.
Well, my, my comment, Mr. Baker, I've worked with you for ten years, I've known you for fifty, and I never doubt your sincerity and argued with you and called you names in public, so I respect your opinion, I hope as a board, we all can work together and find some medium where we can assure we don't have these unintended consequences, as long as we're still funding our police officers in public safety. I think there's a will, there's a way, so I ask all of you to join arms and hands to look out for the betterment of the community, at the same time, looking out for everybody at a whole, that's my pledge to you, okay?
Thank you, my pledge to you is, my priority will be emergency services.
And prior to this meeting, we had a brief conversation in the hallway, and said this to ourselves, as former friends and colleagues, current friends and colleagues for decades. So, I think we see some common ground coming here.
Yep, so with, um, those kind remarks, and we have known each other.
Well, let's.
Over half a century.
We knew, we knew each other fifty pounds ago.
Yeah, that's right, so personally, I would like to make a motion that we roll back the tax rate to, uh, two point eight.
Before we roll back to tax rate.
But I'm gonna make a motion.
But I'd like to, before we have that.
I'll second it for discussion.
We'll have a discussion.
Okay, there, second.
So, roll back to.
I'd like to see what the effects are before we vote on it, cause I'll vote no right now, cause I wanna see where the cuts and what we're gonna roll back, what positions aren't gonna hire. Does it mean our employees and police fear mongering aren't gonna get their raise at a time they're most needed? I've been in this seat for ten years, I've seen public safety take a backseat, meaning firefighters and volunteers in career, cooking chicken, selling soup sales. I've seen our police out struggling, uh, Mr. Baker, I even heard you many a times at the, well, and this is to your credit, Terry would stand up and say, you've saved us forty million dollars here in payroll, we're here to support you, at a time when their need is great. And we put them on the back burner for ten years, we're now gonna defund them.
No, we're.
That's what, that's my opinion, that's my, that's my opinion, that's my opinion, that's what's gonna happen with this drastic cut of money.
No, you just said your pledge, you just said your pledge. You said you were not going to.
If we've increased positions.
I see no other alternative.
We've increased positions by about the count of fifty, so, or if those fifty positions are not gonna come from public safety, where are they gonna come from?
Those thirty-three firefighters will lose their job in the fourth year.
Okay, well, I think we have, I have a motion in a second.
That is fear mongering, and I would like to say with Commissioner Baker.
Well, let me put that as a question mark, let me put that, let me re, let me restate that, will, will we have the funding to pay their salary?
With the understanding that emergency services would not be affected, those firefighters are not going to be fired, Jeff, that is not fair, that's big government is what you're talking about, you're a big government guy.
I dispute that, no, I don't agree with your, I don't agree with your assessment, I don't, all I'm asking for
And that's fine, but these are big government conversations, the government is needed to do everything, that's not, we're not big government.
Is to withdraw the motion so we can work out and see where these cuts would take place, so we can make an educated decision, if not, my vote is no.
I stand for my second. And I wish, and I wish.
How can you, how can you vote on this and not know who you are affecting?
Let's call for a vote, there's a motion in a second.
Can I, can I just say that I just keep hearing, we can't do it, we can't do it, we can't do it, we can't do it.
I didn't say we can't do it, I, I, that's before compromise.
But nobody's looking at the, but nobody's looking at the positive, if I would've started my three businesses with the attitude of doom and gloom, I would've never even started them. And so.
Well, I, I think trying to serve the public by giving them extra public safety is not doom and gloom, I think that's a positive.
I agree, and, and we're all for that.
Well, all I'm asking is to wait to make a recommendation to her to see where these cuts would come, and then we come back and bring them for that day, that's my talk for the most.
Sarah, ensure they don't come from the firefighters that were fired.
That's, that's right, and that's my part, but what, the collateral damage of effectual services to our community will be what? That's what I'm asking, no one can sit here and say, can you tell us what the collateral cuts are, what they're going to be, if we fully fund these firefighters? What are the, what are the other cuts, where's it coming from?
You, you guys, I'll say, let me finish, and you guys can vote, you got your three votes, but let me say it before, before you get your three votes.
You've been there before, and I don't know if we have our three votes or not, we only have a motion in a second.
No, you got it, you got it. Seven, seventeen million dollars, you're gonna, you're going, you guys might like, not like the word defund, you're gonna defund something. You're gonna create a heck of a mess, seventeen million dollars, we're not talking two million, I'm in, seventeen million dollars. I just don't see how you do that, sitting here on a whim, with a gentleman that served one day, and do that. I don't see how that's possible, how you can make a decision to affect every county employee, possibly law enforcement, possibly, you said you're not going to, someone's gonna suffer for seventeen million dollars, somebody's gonna suffer.
And Randy, and you made a decision to have every taxpayer suffer when you increased the tax rate?
You go out and ask a hundred taxpayers.
We provided service for those taxpayers to have an ambulance show up on the worst day of their life.
You know what, before I come in here, I asked my biggest critic, for forty cents or fifty cents a day, what do you want me to do? He said, leave it alone.
On the worst day of your life, you call that nine one one, and you hope someone shows up.
I have a motion on the floor, and I'm not gonna.
I'm done, I'm, I'm.
There's still discussion going on, I'll call for the vote, soon as discussion's over, but again, uh, respectfully to you.
No, I'm finished. No, I think it's just a bad move, guys, I mean, do what you gotta do, but.
Uh, Mr. Downey, do you have a statement?
Yes, pursuant to state statute, any, in this case, decrease of the rate, uh, would not become effective until January first, assuming that the comptroller was given notice of the rate change by July first.
So, you'd have to make the motion effective to that rolling, is that correct, is that what you're saying?
I'm just telling you as a matter of law, you're not gonna, right, this year, this year, the amount's gonna remain the same until December thirty-first. If the motion passes, and then July one, it would decrease to two point eight.
July, in what year?
January, January one, January one.
January one, yes.
Assuming that we gave notice to the comptroller by July, by July one.
Twenty twenty-two.
And how would that, and how would that affect the disparity grant?
I believe that the disparity grant would come through for fiscal year twenty-two, and then in twenty-three, it would be reduced back to two million.
And at two point eight percent, what is our disparity grant award?
Two million on two point eight percent.
We lose seventeen million.
It's eight point four million in disparity grant on a three point two percent, so you gotta take into account the income loss as well. So, if you take it down to three million, you have about a four million dollar decrease in disparity and a five million dollar decrease in income. If you take it down to two point eight, you have about a six point five million dollar decrease in disparity and ten million, eleven million in income loss.
And that's, and that, that's our year, that's on a yearly basis, right?
Annual basis, recurring loss.
The disparity grant, something I think is very important in our view at this, this point, when taxes were increased, the disparity grant is not guaranteed, um, in perpetuity. You mentioned that legislation would change to the effect that make that.
They took away the sunset clause.
So, that the governor's wondering, this budget table, as to what level he's going to fund the disparity grant, so, we can't bill out or operate the budget based on a grant that may not always.
And it's not available always at two point eight either, so it could always go lower. All right, I, I, do we have any more discussions, call for a debate, everybody all right?
One last thing?
Go ahead.
I, I would really be interested in knowing what that savings would be if we took those thirty positions out of the budget.
Well, the savings to the current year wouldn't be anything because they are funded through the grant. Uh, the impact is gonna be felt in years three, four, and five, when we don't have the grant money, um, to pay for.
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant, like.
Right.
Oh, for the vacancies?
You, you meant the thirty, right, we just do enough, what's the average salary, fifty grand times, fifty thousand times in benefits, sixteen?
Let's say fifty thousand, thirty, you've got one point five million, and, uh, the pension has to be provided for regardless of the number of employees, so we still have to make our pension contribution, whether it's distributed between those thirty employees or not, twelve million in pension.
How much is that, approximately? Now, how much if you, if you didn't fund, which we're. Now, how much if you, if you didn't fund, which we're, if we don't hire thirty people here that positions are open?
Well, it wouldn't change the pension cost. So when we, when we say benefits, I just want you to know, I can't calculate a savings from pension, because we're, we have to pay the twelve million.
A couple of million dollars we get, right?
One point five million is, is fifty.
So that's getting close to seventeen million. We're getting there.
Terry.
So you're talking, you were, you were talking about, I'm, I'm sorry, you were, you were talking about if we don't fill those vacancies, if we don't budget for those vacancies.
Yeah, he's not referring to the, uh.
He's saying if we don't budget for the vacancies.
No, 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 the, the vacancies around county government.
That's right.
Because we're not, okay, so that's.
Yeah, I'm all for those positions.
Okay, um, if there's no more discussion, but Commissioner Baker, just for clarity.
We are going to have to prepare an ordinance or a resolution, so, um.
Is there a require, is our public hearing required?
I don't think there's a public hearing required for a rate decrease. However, there does need to be a resolution or ordinance adopted, which is actually the effective thing, and I'm hesitant to have you move forward on something of this consequence without having a resolution or ordinance before you. We could certainly have it, we could certainly have it for next week.
Commissioner Baker, would you just restate it to perhaps clarity that you want to reduce it back?
Reduce the, the income tax rate from three point two back to two point eight percent?
And we have those.
And I want also included in that motion, uh, I will not, uh, I want the, the thirty-three firefighters or emergency services know that they are going to be my top priority and I have no interest in, uh, reducing their funding.
How about the eight hundred employees? You going to put that in there anywhere?
Randy, that's just what I said.
Oh, you're not going to put that in there?
I, I, I don't know. Is it appropriate to be in the motion, that part of the, the comment part about the funding?
Well, then I'm fine with it.
Or is it just, just roll it back? That could be part of the conversation and discussion.
We're directing staff, and, and let me second that so we can have discussion again. We are directing staff. We want our tax rate to be rolled back to what it was at two point eight percent for the income tax rate. And we're telling staff that as you make those adjustments, we do not want our firefighters to be, we don't want firefighters to be dismissed. That's not what we're saying. We want that to be held and hold.
And part of the discussion, I'm in agreement with that. I'm asking you not to vote for it today, cause, so we can see what those adjustments to our budget will be. Which departments? And that's all I'm asking. I think that's fair.
I think the vote is a clear.
We, you, uh, but I, I think we need to see what they are before we vote, but you've got the motion. I'm calling for the vote. All in favor for Terry's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
I apologize to everybody in the community.
Charlie, did you say yes? Okay, I've been here at three, two. Terry's motion carries. Mr. Downey, uh, sign you guys to work out with Peter Francho and the rules on the, on how we do that little public hearing. John? And, um, hearing, no more discussion? Need a motion to go into closed session?
Oh, I thought we were done.
We have one second closed session going on today.
Motion to go into closed session.
Zero second? All in favor, say aye.